It's 6:30. I'd like to follow the Board of Education meeting notice at 6:30. I'd like to call it to order and we will start with the flag.
I'd like to reach out to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to be having a special education update presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is intimate. I want to thank you all for being here and always giving me this time and coming in early to dive into some of the areas of special education and people personnel that we don't typically have time for during those very short budget presentations. So our focus areas today are going to be to look at the IDEA grant and pull it apart a little bit and look at why we use it, how we use it, and how we maintain it. But first, I'd like to introduce Jerry Barone. He is the clinical supervisor for Effective School Solutions out of Summit, New Jersey.
Yes.
And he has been asking for a while to come to you and present, so I took him up on his offer and thought it would be a perfect opportunity to learn from him. He oversees the whole really northeast region, correct?
Yeah, Chief Officer of Clinical Operations, whatever it is.
Great. Well, I'm going to let you introduce your staff.
Sure.
They're here, which is wonderful.
So Sarah Moody.
Hi.
Where are you working at, Sarah?
I'm actually in Northville Elementary School. I'm the coordinator of the program. We have a total star program there.
Okay, and Debbie?
I'm Debbie Neoney. I'm the program coordinator at New Milford High School.
How long you been here?
Well, this is our third school year.
All right, Ann.
I'm Cheryl Plankton. I'm one of the regional directors and responsible for quality management in Connecticut, and I've been with the company for four years.
Also working at a Westin and Madison.
Yes, I oversee those districts that he mentioned.
And Thomas. All right, so we wanted to not take too deep of the dive, but a little bit of a dive into what is ESS. So we start with a student or a parent quote. We do satisfaction surveys twice a year in the fall and in the summer, spring months, to take a look at satisfaction, parent satisfaction with ESS services. So this was a pithy quote that we thought, you know, fit, and you're going to see all the quotes as we go later. "I can't express how helpful the program has been for my child. We wouldn't have made it to this point without it." That's not so much a compliment for ESS, that's a compliment for the district. Even though ESS has a unique relationship with families not being part of the district per se, parents know from us that you have a special district that brought us in to work with you guys. So parents are very happy about this. Certainly helps with school climate. Right. In terms of the mission of ESS, we started this back in 2009. We were working in a therapeutic day school. And intuitively, as the executive director of that therapeutic day school, we knew that there were students in our building, as much as they loved our services, that didn't need to be there if there were services in their own public schools. So we had an idea of creating cost-effective, state-of-the-art therapeutic programming like we had in our therapeutic school for public schools. From that time to this time, since 2009, we've grown to 83 schools in 45 districts in New Jersey, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania. Most likely, we'll be in Massachusetts next year, certainly Rhode Island. Looks like Pennsylvania certainly will grow, and there's about five districts interested in California, believe it or not. But there's a number of districts that are very, very interested in what ESS provides. So we've grown and we've evolved, as too for us here. This is a quick presence picture of where we are in Connecticut. It tells you all the districts that we have, and that's in your handout. The three reasons why, main reasons why districts are interested in ESS are pretty simple. Traumatic improvement in school-related performance. That's first and foremost. When we first talked about what are the data points for our students, we knew grades, discipline, and attendance would be the first three that we'd be looking at. The next is student is educated in a least restrictive environment. So I'll show you something on the tier system. It's the highest tier that districts are putting in place, and it has a way of sort of balancing things out when you end up putting in a high-tier intervention. And the last is significant reduction in out-of-district placements. So, and you also have a place to return students if they are in an out-of-district, a soft place for them to land post-discharge. In terms of this RTI framework, and I'll do all of this in one shot, an RTI framework, I'm sure you're all quite familiar with. An RTI framework for ESS and mental health really says that the top of the pyramid talks about the highest level of intervention that we have. And we offer that, obviously, through the wraparound program that we spoke about, both of the programs here in New Milford. That's a way to take your most significant students and not prevent them from going out of district, stabilize them in a program that offers counseling services every single day, right? So group therapy, psychoeducation, individual at least once a week, PRN sessions, as-needed sessions, family sessions every other week. That's the basic structure of the program. Obviously, when Tier Three is in place, it helps the other tiers function a little bit better. There's not as much a pull on trying to solve the issues of your most chronic students. These are the students that we're seeing. Just to mention a few symptoms, suicidal ideation, school avoidance, aggressive behavior, depression, substance abuse, severe anxiety. I can't tell you how many times we've run this slide, and sometimes we'll change many of the things here, but often we don't change. So this is not just your district, these are many, many districts. At least you're doing something about it. What makes ESS unique? We were never interested in providing a counselor. We were interested in providing a program with great supervisors and great counselors, but it was a whole package. It wasn't just a group of counselors that just come in and just open up their bag and do counseling. Nothing against that. So it's a licensed mental health professionals, that's Debbie and Sarah who introduced themselves, and Cheryl as well, of course, my own self. It's a clinical program with group every day, individual, family. It's measured by our quality management department. It has intimate protocols on how everything is done, from group to psychoeducation to family sessions, and we measure all of it. That constellation of things happening together is what makes the music. It's what, when you're in a building and you're providing those things, and you've got a great principal, great vice principals, great director of special services, all working together, very involved, all working together. Now, you have a school within a school. You actually have things that are better than out-of-district placements. The quality management department that oversees our records and makes sure that everything is up to date is an insurance company for the districts because we're looking at every student, every record. Is it on time? Is there a high risk here that we need to vet out? Besides the regular supervision that our staff get, quality management is always looking at those things as well. But this is the way good behavioral health should work, and especially in a school. These are some of the things that we present as specialties. We have addressing challenges for behavioral students, so we have a specialty track for behavior students. We're not using that in New Milford. We have a special school avoidance track. Yes, we are using that in New Milford. And we provide professional development as well. PD, you'll see, really grow for us over the next year or two. But these are 10 offerings that we offer every district. The district can go anywhere with these professional development opportunities. We provide also Insights, which is a newsletter that we put out every single month. It goes out to a number of different people, and we try to get it out to as many teachers as possible. It's a pithy sort of article about, well, this is fostering gratitude in schools, so gratitude is a very big thing. And then autism awareness, which is a new program that we developed this year, autism programming. Another thing that we offer for parents every month is Cold Solutions. To medicate or not to medicate, these helps parents understand mental health in your children, maybe a little bit more intimately. Caring for your child by caring for yourself, self-care one. Quick on the executive summary piece. ESS program in New Milford is making impact. I'm going to show you some data in a few minutes to show you that. Since we began in this district, six students have come back from out-of-district placement. Two students back from home instruction, and it has prevented an estimated 60 students from being out of the district.
Twenty.
Twenty, I'm sorry. Twenty of 60. It's about 30%. For the current year, two students are returned, are returners from ODP, and an estimated eight had ODP avoided since we began. Based on these numbers, the district is looking at $355,000 of net program, you know, being up 355,000 dollars. We've identified additional opportunities for utilizing and expanding the program into next year, up to $470,000. So this is a bit of an eye chart, and this will take you through it. If you look at this, what it's saying for 2019, which is right up there, that two students are currently attending this program that were previously in out-of-district placement. If you guesstimate, estimate that it's about $80,000 with transportation for an out-of-district placement, that's $160,000. You subtract that 160 from the price of the program, and what you have left is 282.9. When you go to the next column of the students that we've prevented, the remaining students, we also guess, and I think it's pretty conservative, that of the 27, about eight other students could have gone out of district. When you do that same math, eight times 80, you come up with 640. And you add those two together, and that's how you get to 357.1. And that's, you know, I think, a fair analysis. I mean, I've done this a number of times with a number of different districts, and most say this is a pretty fair analysis and really kind of captures the savings of ESS. What it helps you see is that if you were just to keep two students always enrolled, now, there's a number of students that are out of district right now, but not many. I see districts that have 170 out-of-district placements that are smaller than this district. But if you keep just those conservative numbers in place each year, as out-of-districts increase by 5%, your cost savings goes up as well. And it shows that this program is working for you. Another way to break this down is that six students have returned from out-of-district placement since we've been here. Using that same math, that's about $960,000 in savings just for those six students. And how you get to that number is 80 times 6 times 2, because an average student is out at least two years for an out-of-district placement. Prevention savings, we talked about, and I'm going to talk about staff productivity in a few minutes. We like to look at this piece of data I'm showing you now yearly. So these are last year's numbers at the high school. At the end of the year, absences were down by 12%. So kids, on average, missed two days, 2.25 days in a marking period, it went down to two. So your school avoid, and what we find out is that many of those numbers are made up of one or two kids that have missed a lot of school. So over the course of last year, absences went down by 12%. So students are showing up more frequently, school avoidance protocols are working. In terms of GPA, it went up by 17% or 16.8 from 1.79 to 2.09. We wanted to put a slide in place for the elementary school that would capture some of the good stuff that's going on there, and there's many small vignettes that we could tell and anecdotal pieces of information. But I wanted to share this. We look at restraints, and we look at how many did our students have when they first started in September, and how many do they have today? And you could see by this that we started off with 25, so that's of a population of about six to eight students, let's say, when we first started. Moved to 14, to four, to two, to one, and then for the last three months, it's been zero. Okay? Now, it could be one student had more than one of those, you know, restraint issues, right? But that's really great numbers for everybody, and certainly it's a great number for Northville, who has a great staff. This is another time-saving slide that we look at. It tells you that since we began in Northville, 845 urgent sessions have been done. Urgent is a strong word. That simply means that you get individual once a week, we have a few contacts with you in a number of different times during the day. But these are the times that we have to get up, run to a room, and see a student. That happened 845 times since we began. If we say that an average intervention is 30 minutes, that's 422 hours of cost savings or hour savings or time savings for district personnel to do the things that they would like to be doing. So they're not fixing these things and taking care of these things. When you look at the high school, the high school has about half that number, and it has more students. So of course, as they get a little bit older, they're not going to be in crisis as frequently. But that's a very solid number. At the high school, 481 urgent sessions, a cost, or not a cost savings, but an estimated staff hours of 240. The last piece we'll share is satisfaction surveys from last year. Yes, it's true, 100% of the parents, and we get all of, as many as we can get back from parents. So this is everybody, so that they strongly agree or agree that the program has been successful for their child.
What roughly is the number of respondents in this?
The end, you know, the average, ours is about 18. Do you know what the number was that the last year?
Um...
Now, we do it twice in a year, so this is both.
Yeah.
So I'm going to say 15 to...
Yeah, I would say, we almost got every parent, and I think last year we had 17 families or 17 students. So I would say this is probably about 15.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's a commonly asked question. What is the end with that? So then, here are some more quotes from parents. And at this point, I was just going to give Deb you a chance to talk a little bit and maybe Sarah about some of the things. These are the quotes actually about the program, so if you want to talk a little bit about the high school program.
So this is my third year as a program coordinator at New Milford, and I think we've had a lot of success at the high school. I've seen students who had a really difficult time the year before we met them. Either they were eighth graders in Scatacote, or they just weren't coming to school at the high school. And attendance has definitely improved. It's just simple things, like they have a lot of anxiety, and they don't know how to share that with teachers, or there's issues with peers, and they have poor social skills. So we work on that in the groups. Individually, they all have individuals once a week, and I would say most of the students I probably see multiple times a day. And it could be just they want to say hi. It could be, I'm having a rough time in class. I just need 20 minutes of your time. And then the family piece, you know, we talk to the parents. Some parents I talk to, there was one parent I talked to every day at one point. And then there's some parents you talk to twice a month or once a week. Just kind of depends on what's going on. And I think it depends on where the student is in the program. Most, I'd say half of our students have stayed in for two years. So there is no end date, which I think is nice. So if they're not ready to leave, then you can still keep them the following year. We had one student who was in there for three years, and people did not think she was going to graduate high school. They did not think she was going to go to college. She was very difficult. But at the end, she was able to apologize to teachers, to her mother, to me, and say that she knows that she was difficult. And they moved to South Carolina, and I got a phone call in December that she finished her first semester of college. I told her she could, you know, email me or call me any time and give me updates. And we have another student who was in for two years, had such a difficult time focusing in class, and he graduated from the program last year, is going to graduate early. He's going to graduate a semester early from high school, and he's going to go into the military. And it's weird, because people say, when you met that kid, that's not where you would have thought he would have been. And his dad and him both said they wouldn't, he wouldn't be where he is if it wasn't reassessed. And I think he just needed someone to talk to in the moment when he gets upset. And a lot of kids say, you know, they go to outpatient therapy, and by the time they get there, they forget what they were upset about, or they don't want to talk about their feelings. And so we're there in the moment, and I think that's a huge difference, because when they're anxious, you're there with them in the moment. If they're angry about something, you're there in the moment to help them not explode, or maybe not be inappropriate, and you give them time to vent, or just a place to calm down. And I think it's made a huge difference with these, with these students and how successful they've been because of it.
Yeah, and I work at Northville, so I'm with the younger kids, but everything Debbie said echoes for my school, too. It's, it's amazing, kind of, the changes I've seen in some of these, these kids, when they feel like they're a part of something and that they have, you know, a mood that'll listen to them and just kind of, you know, someone that can get right in there and be accessible to them whenever they need, and help them navigate the moment-to-moment stressors that come up, you know, at school, which is where they spend a lot of their time. So just, just being able to learn the skills right there, hands-on, I think is making such a big difference for these kiddos. And, you know, it's, it's so valuable every day.
And that restraint slide that we showed, right, that decrease, shows that folks in the building are getting to ESS quicker. So they're recognizing way before a student, you know, is ready to, you know, kind of pop off.
Right, the cues and the little, the little things that...
What the cues are. So that is an enormous amount of growth for Northville. I mean, it was there already. I mean, you have a lot of great people. But it seems like people really are like, wow, that worked. So if I catch this person earlier, that'll even work, you know, even better. So people are getting better and better at that early intervention.
Every student has a reset plan. It sort of adjusts as we go along as the needs change, and it's kind of something that we, I can communicate to staff that works with the students and their teacher to help them see the specific things that will show the child's starting to struggle. And then they can implement coping strategies within the classroom that could de-escalate, avoiding the need for sort of any removal or seclusion or restraint.
Thank you very much, but we'll take some questions.
I know that at the high school, we have 19 possible slots, and I think we have 18 placements, right?
We have 18.
We have 18.
Thirdly, place. How are we doing it in Northville? How many kids are participating in STAR?
So in STAR, there's nine potential slots right now. Eight are filled.
Okay. And are some of those kids from Hill and Plain being just redistricted over to Northville so that they can...
There's one.
Okay. And has there been talk about incorporating ESS into here at the intermediate school and that Scatacote, because I do know that there's a need at both of those schools with some kids who have high anxiety and are, or are just, are behaviorally difficult and could benefit. So I'm kind of wondering where we are in that process.
I can speak to it. I mean, I think that this type of level of therapeutic support for our students would benefit at each of the schools, but we know that we have budget responsibilities, too. You know, the program right now, the STAR program at Northville is isolating. It was based there due to the specific needs for this year. Some of those, those children are gaining coping skills, as you saw from the data. Some of them are moving on to Serenoville. So we're going to have to look at that program and see whether or not it will sustain there, or if it needs to be moved. So it's a work in progress right now.
And ESS has the flexibility to move programs if we need to suit the district's needs.
So can I ask you, how many kids are moving up that are currently at...
Four.
It's five, actually. There are five second graders that are going to be here next year.
Laura, a quick question. The number 275,000 sticks in my mind, and the cost to implement, is that the 420,000?
Right, so that's how many, misleading. We just talked about that. What they did was they combined the STAR program and the high school program.
Yeah, that's the one.
So that's the total cost.
Right.
Okay, right. Because I know when we, three years ago, when we looked at the high school program bringing that in, that was the number. It was kind of a cost avoidance piece, and we used budgeted money.
And that price is staying flat this year. We didn't do any increase.
Right. So the STAR program is the remainder of that. I'm curious to the mechanism for how students, are all students, students with an ed plan that would avail themselves to this?
In IMP?
Yeah.
No, actually not, which is, I think, really effective. Many of them are students who haven't been classified and may never be classified due to the level of support. Other students are entering the referral process, you know, with the STAR support and with ESS support. So to answer that question, I would say 30 to 40% are typically generalized students.
Which is another great data point. I mean, you could prevent, you know, classification.
Right, right. And speaking to the point of, I know, we've talked about this, Laura, about, you know, trying to find every paperclip, you know, for excess cost. This program in and of itself, again, help me understand, would we actually avail ourselves to any excess cost if we did have students who we could say, oh, well, they would be a disreplacement? That would be four and a half times our per pupil, or because it's the way it's a modular cost?
Right, we would still have to extract per pupil costs using the ESS total cost, so we would be below the excess cost threshold for the majority of the students.
Because you're essentially taking all 18 kids, and you're saying, okay, the program costs 275, or, you know, okay.
Versus, you know, an out-of-district placement, like Jerry said, $80,000.
Right. But that's, that's a Chuck E. Wright's at one place, where it's easy to say this is the excess cost. Okay. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand some of the finances of it.
I'm going to make the assumption boldly that if we have further questions later, we could direct them towards your office and then farm them out. But thank you very much for explaining this.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had Greg up here, Greg, did you have any feedback in terms of...
No, I just think, everything, I just wanna, you know, echo what's been said. I think some of the testimonials are just proof of the program and the good work that's going on. And I think your question is valid, I mean, I feel really lucky that this program's at the high school and, you know, and I, you know, I've had conversations with my colleagues and I know that there's a need in other schools as well. So, it's, it's a great program, I think it's really dependent on the people that you have in the building. I have not met you, but I think we're working really closely with Debbie, who has really embraced herself and has been embraced by our faculty. She's part of our group and I think that people see her as one of us and not some outsider. And the students really feel safe with her and our faculty feels comfortable with her when they're dealing with their kids and they need any questions and have some concerns or whatever, she's been a great resource.
Yeah. Yeah.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. How do you decide which student gets into the program? I mean, is that like the kid who's, you know, having meltdowns all over the place, does somebody refer him? I mean, it sounds like it's a program a lot of kids would benefit from, so how do you...
There should be like, you know, Laura could give you the, the really deep dive, but, you know, there should be a triage, so, you know, just like that, those layers of tier interventions, you know, a student who, you know, has been to a hospital, let's say at the high school, a student who's been hospitalized before, had a suicide attempt, has awful school avoidance, anxiety, taking medication, these are the students that typically find their way up. And I think that what we do is try to help the triage work better, because not everybody needs ESS and you wanna identify earlier, so you use those other lower-level interventions before they get to us.
But how do you get to us? That's my question.
So, at the high, at the high school level, I work really well with guidance and the social worker, so they may say, I have this student and they explain it to me, do you think we should refer, do you think I shouldn't? And if I say yes, then they refer and it goes to their administrator and then it goes to Greg and Laura and then we all sit down and we kinda figure out if this student needs ESS now, or can they wait, or are there other services that could be put in place, so...
Is it ultimately up to the student and/or her family to decide if they are gonna be in?
Yes, they have to. Yeah, they have to. They have to be willing to participate. And a lot of times, students are very hesitant and I get it, because, you know, therapy can be scary, they don't wanna talk about their feelings and, you know, I'm the stranger, so what I, if there's a child on the fence, I say, just come in, talk to me, if you can't stand me, then you could say no. But, you know, I've found that, you know, if you can be, you know, not so scary and just kinda not push them too hard, too fast and kind of really focus on building that relationship, you get farther. And I haven't had...
I'm just gonna end on a suggestion from my colleague of mine and that is, I think one of the important things of this, Laura, you've mentioned it before, is that you keep our students in, in our own community rather than creating, guess what, more anxiety by placing in another place.
That's a really great point, because students have to get on a van or a bus, travel additional 45 minutes, they're already marginalized by the struggles that they've had and then they're gonna feel even more...
So, I guess what I'm saying is, that's one of those things, you know, priceless. You, putting a dollar amount on it's a little bit difficult, because we're talking students here and not dollars, although I know that would help tremendously expand the program. But anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have more? Yeah, I think it's seven.
The chairman just realized that...
I'm sorry.
...regime doesn't start for a half now. He thought we were in a hurry.
Oh, I'm sorry. You wanna hear more vignettes?
Which means, I get to ask a question.
All right.
I do have a little piece that I need to...
Now, we're, now it's a time cut.
At seven o'clock, you've been on the board for 16 years?
I do. Want me to start the power story also?
I wanted to ask if, if there is a particular psychological model or guiding philosophy that you rely on to build what you do, to hire who you hire, to train them and to, and to direct the kind of interactions that they, they have with kids? Or is this something that is kinda homegrown with ESS or with the...
It's homegrown, but I, I think that, you know, it's from years and years of experience. I've worked in intensive outpatient for many, many years. So, those caseloads of nine or 10, that was a number that we, we knew was, that we settled on, that worked. Group therapy, individual therapy, psychoeducation, skills groups and family work, that constellation of things happening with really great clinical staff who know how to use all of those modalities with a great supervisory piece above it, really always works. So, I think that's the evidence-based, you know, message from us. But we have something called the white papers or four pillars that we put out, which is, you know, best practices. And we give this out to any district, whether with the ESS or not, saying, if you're gonna do some work in, in schools, you know, this would be something that you would wanna look at. It is hard to, to come up with these things, because this is all we do. So, you know, we're able to do it and it's, and it's, we're able to do it and it's cost-effective, but that constellation of things happening together. And then, we've worked a lot on our relationships with leadership in the buildings as well. When we first started to do this work, you know, we didn't understand the importance, I think, of doing, being connected with a director of special services, principals and all that that brought us. So, I think that's how we really have evolved. So, when we say that we're an embedded service, we truly are an embedded service.
And I noticed, I think you remarked and there's something on one of these pages in here about providing professional development to the staff in these schools.
Sure.
I'm assuming that's from a preventive notion and how...
Yeah, that's a lower-tier intervention, right? You could say that that's a tier-one intervention for your staff, right? The more that teaching staff can keep students in the room, that the, the room becomes an energized, well, emotionally well-regulated place where everybody is, is, can be there. Students will not seek out, out of the classroom, what they need. So, you want them to stay energized and getting all they need in the classroom. So, PD really, all of our PD offerings are really about having a well-regulated classroom and what can we do to help you to have that? Cause the less students that are going out, the less traffic, foot traffic for principals, vice principals, less kids getting classified.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So, can I, I remember this being brought to the board when ESS first came on board and I was fascinated by it and loved to hear all these updates and thank you so much, all of you for sharing. I'm interested in what a typical day looks like for a kid. Are, are there some students who are pulled out and are receiving their instruction outside of the classroom? Are all of them, do they have to be integrated into the, into the school, into their classes and if they're just pulled out if they have issues? Cause I thought that there was an area of the school where, where ESS was kind of housed so that these students who were not ready to go into the classroom were educated. Is that true?
Yes. So, in New Millford, we have a group room and then right office, our small office. So, every student's day looks different. We have one student right now who's really struggling to go to classes, so she's been with us pretty much all day and the teachers are coming to us and to her and kinda giving her quick instruction and then she's doing the work there and then either she's meeting with the teacher and giving it back or we are. So, we wanna do that for a short period of time, cause we also don't want them, I find some students get too comfortable with that. And there are some students that would rather be with us, you know, and, and instead of having to, to be in a classroom and kinda face some of their, their anxiety. So, we're encouraging her to go to a class for 30 minutes here, 30 minutes there, or whatever class she's comfortable with. We have another student who just came out of the hospital, so same thing, slowly integrating her back into the classroom. The issue, I think, becomes, you know, we can't sit there and, and teach them, you know, biology and chemistry, so we do the best that we can.
Yeah.
And the teachers in New Millford, I have found, have been so wonderful and the case managers, just at, all the staff in New Millford High School have been great and we really work well together and whatever they think the student needs or, you know, we figure it out together. And we even have students who, you know, have complained, I don't feel comfortable with this teacher and we've had meetings and I've been there with the student and the teacher and it's just, there's a disconnect. And once we have that meeting and they can kind of connect and the student can understand the teacher and the teacher understands the student, the student's more likely to go to class and there's been less issues. So, we do it all and every student is different.
And when you say graduates from the program, you mean they are fully now integrated back into the high school? They still can come see you if something happens, but basically they're done?
Yeah, so, when they graduate, because we're contractors and the releases are no longer valid once they're discharged, I'll tell students they can come in and they can say hi. We have a couple that are still there that, especially one student, I think he struggles with saying, you know, goodbye a little more. So, he comes in probably every day for a few minutes and just says hi, which is fine, but he would, he wants to say, I'm like, no, you gotta, you gotta go. So, when they're discharged, we say, you're more than welcome to come. We have some students that come in right on our whiteboard to say hi to the other kids, but there, if there's a, a main issue, they've gotta go to the social worker, just because I can't, I can't do much with it.
Contractually, yeah, okay.
So...
But there's still support systems for these kids if there's a crisis or if something happens and...
We do two things, we step them down to the social worker or counselor in the school if that's appropriate. And the whole time they're with us, we're working if they need to get the services in the community that will, you know, carry them through summers and on with their life.
And I had a student last year, who, actually this year, who I had discharged at the end and I saw her in the hallway and she was crying and so, I talked to her for a couple minutes and then I brought her into guidance to talk to her social worker and just said, you know, I would talk to you if I could, but I want you, you know, to get, you know, what you need right now. So, we always make sure that when we're starting to discharge, they start to meet with the social workers more. So, right now, some of the kids we're gonna discharge, I've talked to the social workers, these are the kids, so they can start building that relationship back up with the social workers before they're discharged.
I'm sorry, Dave, just one more. Do you, do we set them up with peers in the school? Do we have a, a program in place where they have a buddy, somebody that maybe is a good influencer or somebody who they can go and talk to that's a peer?
Well, the group therapy itself becomes that kind of, you know, social support for them. So, students who are on their way out will be great advocates of the program and saying, this is, I was just like this when I started. And this is what you need to do. So, I'm sure that there's that small little group that still talks to each other, but we're not doing anything per se with peer counselors as well. I, I'm not sure if the peer counselors in some ways would, would quite understand the depth of some of these issues with some of these kids, so they might not, you know, really kinda resonate with it, but I, I think it's a great idea. Certainly, we're interested in first aid, mental health first aid, if you've ever heard of it before and we're gonna all be trained in it. And there, there's a new thing going on with mental health first aid where they're coming up with an adolescent version and Lady Gaga's behind us. So, we have a meeting on Thursday actually with them and they've developed something for teens that'll be probably out nationally in a couple of years, that teens get trained in first aid, mental health first aid. So, that's a great thing.
I think at our high school, actually, we, I don't know where Greg is, but we do have a group, this is the second year where they've gone through training for mental health first aid, maybe it's a different version of what you're talking about.
No, it's the same thing.
There's only one.
Or they have a safe person, it's just, you have having a safe person they can go to if they're just having a bad day. They may know or talk about, they just want to know that somebody is safe, it's not gonna judge them.
And we document every single week on what we do, so every detail of what goes on is in your records. So, I can tell you that both Debbie and Sarah are great documenters. And that's another thing that we monitor and look at in terms of, is the record up to date? Does it have everything in it that we need to do? Another insurance policy for the district and that also gives us an indication of, is there something going on in this program that we should keep an eye on, right? So, we do incident reports and things like that. But that's, that's the whole program and that's, when Cheryl was introducing herself, she said she's the assistant director, associate director of quality management for the state of Connecticut, but she's fabulous in terms of every one of those details and Cheryl does many of the audits of our quality management for the state of Connecticut. Any other questions?
I will repeat myself. Like I said before. If you have any other further questions, you can bring them up.
I think, Laura, did you have something else aside from...
Yeah, I do, I have part two, much shorter, but it's about the IDEA grant, so I wanna just give everyone a little background on that, so...
I told you it'd be ten minutes.
They're a tough act to follow, but, but thank you so much.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was originally going to go first, I should have. Mine is a little drier, but it's, it's really, I think, very rewarding to hear them speak and to hear Greg speak and to hear the clinicians talk about the successes, so... Yes, I'm gonna start. What I wanted to do briefly was to talk to you about the IDEA grant for two reasons. First of all, like I said, the budget time really doesn't allow us time to really dig into it. Second of all, it's a really significant revenue for us, it's almost $1 million that we receive annually from IDEA. So, I wanna talk a little bit about what it is, the framework, how does it impact our students and what are our responsibilities? In order to maintain the IDEA funding, there are certain steps that we need to take caution to and make sure that we follow each year. So, it is an annual federal grant, money's allocated to the states and dispersed based on, first of all, the number of students in New Millford, not the number of special ed students, but the total number of students and also the incidence of poverty for our students. So, those two factors, you know, tell us how much funding we're going to receive. First of all, the federal government and then they send it to the states and then the states sell it, send it to the school districts. So, there's two grants, there's a 611 grant, which is the biggest chunk of the grant, about 871,000, this is based on last year's numbers, and that's for the students who are five to 21 years old. And then the 619 grant, and that's for our preschoolers, that's our three, four and five-year-olds and that's much smaller in size, 31,000. And the IDEA grant is an entitlement grant, so, you know, as long as we follow the requirements, we are entitled to funding from the state, from the state and from the federal government. Every year, I apply for the IDEA grant, every year we've received it, but it is used up over a two-year period, so it, they, they overlap, so you're encouraged to spend about 80% of your grant in the first year, but you do, it does bleed into the second year.
So, you receive it every year or every two years?
Every year.
Every year?
Every year. But you, yeah, so you have two years to spend it, so it's overlapping always. So, this just gives you an idea of the federal funding, if you can look real closely, 1977 was really the authorization of IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Act. Very small portions of the funding went to the states and you can look more closely, you see the huge climb and that parallels with the reauthorization of IDEA in 2004 and you can see that there was significant increases in how much federal funding came through to the, the states and to the local school districts. Okay, so what we have to do is we have to structure everything that we spend through our grant using goals. And these are very broad-based goals intentionally, because there are a lot of needs within any school district for students with disabilities. The first one is just to increase opportunities for all students to be included and that can look like co-teaching, it can look like professional development for teachers, it can look like someone coming into a school and doing walkthroughs to see how co-teaching is doing, it's collaboration time, it's giving teachers, you know, maybe planning periods, bringing in subs so that there's collaboration and, you know, all those opportunities to keep kids in the general ed classroom is always the goal for number one. Number two is a parent partnership, that's an important piece for IDEA. We do it for, through a number of ways, some of our parents' partners workshops we pay through for, through the grant. And we also do person-centered training, are called futures and that's where we bring a team together, parents, it could be aunts, uncles, students, school team, and we project out, what will life, what are our goals for this student in five years, six years, seven years? And everyone has goals and objectives and we move forward with that type of a, a format. So, we might bring in food for the families, because they might be working through their lunch break, or we might be bringing in, you know, trainers or whatever. So, that is a piece of it as well. The next one would be to increase opportunities to access technology and that's always a goal in terms of our students who are non-verbal, but it's really about giving everyone equal access to the curriculum through supplemental services, devices, iPads, low-tech, it could be a Slant board, it could be a number of different things, but technology is a huge piece and a mandated service that we have to provide our students, so we do use a portion of it for that. Number four, specialized instruction for students with learning disabilities. And this could be students with dyslexia, which is a fairly new mandated diagnosis, it this could be students with dyslexia, which is a fairly new mandated diagnosis, it could be dysgraphia writing, it could be dyscalculia math, but what we do is we bring in trainers, we send staff out for training, we bring in consultants, so it's always opportunities to hone our craft, to get better at what we do, and to keep up with whatever is new. Number five, to increase the proficiency and accuracy, we use a program called IEP Direct, and it's basically a web-based platform, and what it allows us to do is it allows us to build our IEPs, ninety-five percent of the school districts in Connecticut use IEP Direct, but it keeps us compliant, it helps us build goals and objectives for IEPs that align with common core state standards, so it's a good tool. And then lastly, to promote best practice for transition planning, we do provide some of the IDEA money for our students at Litchfield Hills, as well as some of the, I said earlier, the person-centered planning. So, two things that are really important for the grant, two pieces, remember I said you have to be compliant, well, the first one is we have to provide a proportionate share to non-public schools within New Milford. Those non-public schools right now for us are Canterbury and Faith Academy. So, we have two things that we have to do, we have to complete child finds, so if there's students there that might be referred, or they think might be eligible for special education, we bring our staff in to do the assessments, to do the evaluations, and then determine eligibility, that's our responsibility. The other piece of it too is provide services, so right now, we have a part-time teacher, or special ed teacher at Faith Academy that we pay for out of the grant, and then we also do some tutoring at Canterbury for students with identified special ed needs.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
That is specifically for from IDEA money?
Correct.
And what happens if you, if you no longer have that money? Like, what happens when you spend that money? Does that then come out of our budget, or then you can no longer provide services?
So, we can, we can use, as an LEA, we can use that money however we see fit to meet the needs of kids with, you know, identified special ed needs. What I do is I prorate it through a nine-month period, and that, especially for the special ed teacher at, you know, Faith, they know that they're gonna be working twelve hours per week for, you know, thirty-six weeks, so that's how it's done. But there are service plans, they're not the full spectrum of all the services in an IEP, it's just, you know, limited services, but parents know that, when they place their child at Canterbury or at Faith, they know that they're only gonna be getting minimal support. And then the other piece of it too, I wish Mr. Gianoni was here, because he and I worked very closely on this part, and it's called maintenance of effort, and basically what it is, we can't spend any less on students than we did the year before, unless there were circumstances such as our special ed population decreased significantly, which has not happened, but we always need to maintain that effort. So, that is something that I work on with him in terms of looking at our overall per pupil, our overall budget, making sure that we're maintaining the effort for students with disabilities. Okay, real quickly, this is what it looks like, this is what last year we spent for, out of 611, we spent, as you can see, a big chunk of it is for staffing, seven hundred and nineteen thousand is for staffing, and it changes each year, depending on cost of living increases, so I always try and balance it so that we still have pieces of the grant left for things that are really essential for the district as well. The non-public teacher I talked about at Faith, and then in-service, you can see that there's a really wide range of different trainings that we always bring in for our students, for our staff, and also for our families. And then, ten percent of our OT comes out of the grant, half of our BCBA that I've talked about before comes out of the grant, person-centered planning, IEP Direct, and then a little bit for mileage. Okay? 619, quickly, two goals for it, it's our preschool portion of the grant, and again, there's, it's approximately, what did I say, thirty-two thousand dollars, so there's not a lot there compared to 611, basically two goals, providing special ed preschool programming with a fully inclusive model that we do at Exels, fifty percent typical kids, fifty percent students with IEPs, and then to enhance preschool programming for the early childhood outcomes, which is part of our annual performance rating, so we always want to maintain that we're meeting criteria for that, which we do every year. Okay, this is what 619 looks like, in terms of how the money is used, you can see a lot of it is instructional salaries again, in-service, again, one, ten percent of the occupational therapist, and then parent training. So, I've tried to go through it really quickly, because I know we've run out of time, but certainly, if you have any questions or anything that you want to follow up with me on the grant, I'd be happy to answer it. It is due in a few weeks, so I'm working fast and furious on it, and I'll bring it to the Board of Ed next month. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thanks, yep.
You should have had some more people around you, though.
I know. It's like, Cindy, be in front of the queen, you know? All right, well, thanks, everybody.
We'd like to entertain any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I got the dirty walk.
I love that they're all wearing their shirts.
Well, here we go, this is lighted up blue, this past month, our schools embraced it, that was Serenobe, you can see everyone's got their t-shirts on, Dr. T and Mrs. Massey, Northville classrooms, everyone really embraced it, and it's not just a day to wear blue t-shirts or blue clothes, it's really a day that we acknowledge all of our differences, really, and it's not just autism, but we've really embraced it, it's become part of the culture. There is a Walk for Autism later this month that's sponsored by, I believe, the high school, I know the PTO's been very involved in autism awareness, and, so anyway, so I wanted to finish with that.
Thanks, Laura.